Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Counselor Finacy.
Yes.
Counselor Bender.
Yes.
Counselor Sweeney.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Missolia.
Yes.
Counselor Finsland.
Yes.
Counselor Herrick.
Yes.
And Counselor McKenzie.
Yes.
Do you have a quorum present?
I recognize the quorum will proceed. I'll ask for consideration of the minutes for the August 16th, 2013 regular council meeting. For the motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll ask for a consideration by the council to move up resolutions to the beginning of the meeting. That'd be resolution 13136 and 13137.
And 13138.
And 13138.
Yep.
For the motion and second to approve, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Terry will move to the resolutions.
Item 10.1 is a resolution of the City of Superior identifying blighted property and providing approval to the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior to assist in the private acquisition, improvement and development of blighted property, and improving the report of the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior regarding the development agreement with convenience store investments for the QuickTrip project you have handed out tonight, the RACs.
Do you wish for discussion by the Director applying?
I guess I could say a couple of words and if there are any questions about QuickTrip and about hunting and fishing, Scott Tigan, the CFO from QuickTrip is here as well. Been working with QuickTrip for the last year or so on some various sites in the City of Superior. And he has landed and has requested, as we had discussed in a special meeting, or not a special meeting, but a closed session about a month or so ago, to purchase some city-owned property in the area of Banks Avenue and Belknap Street, two city-owned properties. I handed out, I apologize, I handed out the map of the areas that the city is looking to sell to QuickTrip. We have entered into an agreement with QuickTrip, redevelopment authority approved last week. Just some highlights of that agreement. We are selling both properties for $320,000. We are, because there are so many improvements on the site, including a large hole that is not our property, but will take some improvements as well as some re, some new soil and things of that nature on the site, we have decided to contribute 160, half of that back to QuickTrip for those site improvements. Scott has also agreed that they will be starting construction in the spring. I do not know and he can address if they will be raising a building or so, they're in the process of purchasing the property, the other two properties from another, from the other owner. Those are essentially the details. I do believe probably in the next month or so, once Scott has control of the couple of properties, there will be a vacation of that alley that is in that area. And we will be working towards doing some site plan work this winter, stormwater, things of that nature that will need to be addressed for the site. So, those are some highlights. If you have some questions for me, I'm certainly happy to help answer them. If you have some questions about what the store, QuickTrip, about its organization, Scott is here as well. He's more than happy to answer a couple of questions if you do, are so inclined.
Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, I was just wondering if Scott could come up and just explain some of the products as far as fuel that he's going to be carrying there. I think there's some different products that we haven't seen here in the city, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening.
I'll start over. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us here tonight, and we look forward to a long future here in Superior. The mayor and I go back about 30 years. Not, this is not our first fight either. But anyway, to answer the question about our products, we will have compressed natural gas at this location, I think that's what you're referring to. It'll be, I think right now we have it in 13 or 14 facilities in the state, and we're excited. We think it's the fuel of the future. The country's got a lot of it, and we can be energy independent if we want to be in this country. And we like to help push it that direction. You had another question. Oh, I'm not sending you any pictures anymore. About my hunting and fishing.
I just, talking about kind of raising schedule, I think I'm probably wintertime and that.
Typically, what we do is, as soon as we own the property, we try to get in and raise pretty quick. So, on the Tower site, that you're probably all aware of, those buildings should be come down in the next couple of weeks. And we would like to get this site cleared off this fall yet too. Any other questions?
Scott, maybe, maybe.
Just waiting.
I do have a question. How do you go about, without giving anything away, but how do you go about selecting this location versus maybe three or four others that were available in the city?
It really goes to size, and really, size is a big thing in Superior, because all of the lots are very narrow.
Right.
Like on Tower, I mean, we're really tight in that location. So, size is a big thing, access is critical, and where we can go. There's plenty of people, there's lots of traffic. We're pretty excited about this location.
So, is that area, geographic area that you're going, is that tight for square footage or whatever you decide?
This location on Belknap and Banks is ample. It's two acres, it's almost perfect.
Oh, okay.
The little site on Tower is very tight.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, well, the 28th Street site, and I know that there's been issues, and that was the first one that came about that, you know, QuickTrip was going to go to, and you're talking about size, how are you overcoming the size of that location? And is it still going to work with parking and all that?
What we had to do there was we had to lay the store in sideways, so instead of, you know, being perpendicular with our pumps, we got to lay in kind of, well, we have to lay in perpendicular instead of parallel to the pumps. It'll be, it'll be all right. We'd like to have more room there, but there's only what's there.
Yeah, so there's, access is going to be from 28th Street and also, what is that, Oaks there, Oaks or Banks?
Banks.
Banks, so it'll be access from both of those streets.
And then right in, right out on Tower.
And, oh, on Tower too?
Yes.
Okay.
A shared access with the credit union.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Any further questions, Scott and Jason?
Scott, you had some interesting things at the RACs meeting to talk about, maybe just spend a minute or so on your employees, those types of things, I think the councilors would be really interested in hearing about that, because when we do these agreements, we, you know, we look at employment and talk a little bit about what you do for your employees.
A little bit of history about QuickTrip. If some of the old timers here, Mr. Mayor will remember, we are kind of an offshoot of Gateway Foods, and we had the Gateway Warehouse out here where Amsoil is. I actually bought that property for Gateway, and Bruce was helpful in helping us get that done. So, we thank you to that, for that. So, but anyway, QuickTrip comes into the business because of our relationship with, in the food business. We come into the business from the food and merchandise side, where just about everybody else comes into the business from the fuel side. You really need to have both to be successful. But we're distribution oriented, production oriented, so we have our own dairy plant. We process about 800,000 pounds of milk a day. The milk comes into our dairy plant in tomorrow morning from tonight's milking, and it's bottled and on the truck tomorrow afternoon and in the stores tomorrow night. So, nobody else can put milk that fresh in, onto the market. We have our own bakery, we make all of our own bread and sweet goods, state-of-the-art bakery. We have our own commissary, make all our pizzas and sandwiches. We buy our bananas direct from South America, and we ripen 27 semi-loads of bananas at a time. We have, we should sell around 45 million pounds of bananas, 38 cents a pound every day. We do a, we do a, and this is a best cap secret in Wisconsin. I got my, you started this. So, we do a market basket study against the leading groceries, and we always include Walmart. Here we'll include Super One, but we always beat Walmart with our, when we do the whole thing, it's about a $40 grocery order, and it includes bread and milk and bananas, potatoes, onions, and when we compare that, we usually beat Walmart by 10 to 15 percent, because we take the middleman out of there. And our quality is as good or better than anything else you get out there, so. But anyway, back in 1990, Don Zitlow, the owner, who was the president of Gateway Foods back then, he owns the company, now his family, he said, you know, we've, our family has enough with just the ownership of QuickTrip. So, all the stores we've built since 1990, and right now I think there's 260 properties in this partnership that the coworkers get to own. So, if you're five years with QuickTrip, you earn a unit in this limited partnership every year that you're full-time. And so then, when that store's paid off in 20 years, instead of that rent going to the bank to make the loan, it can get distributed to the coworkers. So, this last year, we distributed to the members of that partnership, and the store clerk gets a unit, no different than me, you get one unit a year as long as you're working. This year we'll distribute, last year we distributed 6.3 million, I think this year it's eight or nine million. And then that's on top of all of the profits that the company makes, 40 percent goes back to the coworkers. So, based on your pay, you'll get a profit sharing check, and last year it was, along with profit sharing and part of the retirement plan, it was about 14 percent. So, it's what leads to having better employees. All of our employees are drug tested. Then we do random drug testing, I get drug tested, the boss gets drug tested. So, we have a phenomenal staff. When we start hiring here in Superior for this one store, we will have about 32, 32 to 35 coworkers, we'll probably have 300 applications. So, we'll get really good people. We're excited. We'll bring a store leader up here from another store so that we can bring the culture in and then get it going, and you'll be proud to have QuickTrip in Superior. I promise that. Sell enough? But we're really happy to be here, really happy. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Make a motion to approve resolution.
For the motion and second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Scott.
Item 10.2 is a resolution of the City of Superior approving the report of the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior regarding the development agreement with REOW LLC and Chinese Lantern of Superior Inc. for the China Inn project. You also have the RACs report before you tonight.
Director Sirk.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, again, another small land sale in our North End was approached by Paul Stein, who is a representative for the Chinese Lantern and REOW LLC to relocate the China Inn restaurant from their Belknap location. They are going through some lease transformations and will not be getting renewed at that location. So, we are in the process and through agreement and unanimous approval, our redevelopment authority approved the sale for $52,000 of the property that I handed out with the legal descriptions on it, northwest or northeast corner, I'm sorry, of Tower Avenue and A Street. It's about a 250 by 140 piece of property. And essentially, right now, it's, I think it's got some supplies located on it from Chippewa Valley Concrete, but they will be vacating at the end of September so that China Inn can begin construction. Paul is here. If there are any questions, it's a fairly straightforward deal. It's going to be a restaurant with some good-sized banquet rooms, about five or four to five to 6,000 square feet. I think they're still working out some details with their architect, but it's going to be a nice-looking store, and we'll be working with them on some of their design, as well as some of their landscaping that they'll be looking at. So, if you do have any questions for me or Mr. Stein, certainly fire away.
Yeah, I just want to ask Mr. Stein why, a lot of people are asking why he chose this particular location, just to let the public know.
It was on. Turn it on again. Your Honor, council members, Director Sirk. Counselor, your question is, why did we choose that particular location? Yes. Why not? It is a location that fits the needs of the China Inn. We anticipate that it will, number one, bring increased tax revenues to the city, number two, be a model for future development in that area, and number three, serve as some increased employment for the City of Superior. North End to Tower, you're investing a ton of money right now in that. We want to be part of that success. I believe the China Inn is a destination, not necessarily happen to drive by and see it and go in. Long-standing restaurant, top-rated reviews, good customer base, and with the increase in banquet and meeting room service, the owners are going to be able to enjoy more success. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, Mr. Stein? God, I'll ask the pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
For the motion and second to approve, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you so much.
Item 10.3 is the resolution relating to the reallocation of proceeds of the general obligation corporate purpose bond, series 2008A of the City of Superior for street improvements.
Director Vito.
Thanks, Mayor. Quick explanation of this is that we issued debt back in 2008 for a number of projects within tax increment district number nine, which is Winter Street. And Jason approached me about four or five weeks ago and said that when we make a couple, one or two more final payments on some things that are going on there right now, that he estimated there would be in excess of $800,000 remaining from that bond issue. And so, what we need to do is then reallocate that to a different project, because it won't be used within TIF district number nine. So, what we're recommending is that this become a source of revenue within the capital improvement program that's on later tonight for approval. And then we had to pick a project to attach to it, so the East Fifth Street project, the two phases of that are estimated to be, I think, just under $900,000. So, we chose that project as the one to attach these debt proceeds to.
For the motion and second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We'll move back to item six, the consent agenda.
Wait, there are two additional handouts. You have the RACs minutes from Wednesday, August 14th, to receive and file, and also a corrected memo from appointing the proposed rental property study committee. Maria Letzow's title was incorrect on the original, that was approved last meeting.
For the motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.1, I'm requesting directive regarding filling the 10th district council seat.
The council care to address that? Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, I was just, we're just wondering if, I know I read your examples in the past, I mean, would that be something we could tie into even though it's a different district for the elections coming up this spring?
Yeah, you have a couple options. You can leave it vacant for the remainder of the term, which would be 2015, or you can fill it permanently for the remainder of the term. Or you could fill it now and have a special election in April for a one-year term. We will have county board races next April, so it wouldn't cause additional expense.
Counselor Bender.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we, at first, let me make the motion first, then I'll speak to it. I'd like to make a motion that we fill the seat for the rest of this year, up through the April 2014 election, and at that time have the person stand for, have whoever chooses to stand for election for a one-year term, and then whoever chooses to stand for election in 2015 for a regular two-year term.
For the second to that?
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to clarify something. We'll put some ads out in the paper requesting people submit letters of interest. Do you have a timeframe that you would like those back? Would you like them back by the next meeting, which is September 3rd, or the one following that?
Why don't we say the one following, so that gives them closer to a month to be able to do that.
Okay.
And if I could just say a couple things, my original idea was maybe we shouldn't fill it, and, you know, just wait and have a special election, even though it won't cost in any, hardly anything extra, because there's already county board election at the time. But then I thought, that means that we're going for six months or so with no representation for the people in the North End, so I guess my druthers again would be the motion that I made.
That's fine. Just so you know, to order a count, you can't order a special election until 90 days, 92 days prior to when the primary would be, so I'll have to bring it back November 18th or November 19th council meeting for you to actually order that special election, but it'll just be a formality.
Sounds good. Thank you for being up on that.
Counselor McKenzie.
Terry, so you would, so right now, what you just said, you would, we would fill the position in November?
No.
No?
No.
When would we fill it?
We would submit the letters of interest back to you the second meeting in September.
In September.
And invite those people that submitted the letters to come and give a brief overview of why they're interested in filling the position, and then you would go ahead and appoint that person, and then we would have a special election for a one-year term in April of 2014.
Okay, so there would be, so then there would be six councilors running for position in April?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Olson.
Terry, then, could we make that decision that night then, at the council meeting after listening to the folks and, or maybe fraud?
Yeah, you can make the decision that night.
Okay.
You could also, if no one applies for it, or if you didn't think the people were qualified or whatever, you could, you could leave it vacant too. You don't have to fill it. Right now, you could just direct us to advertise for the position.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Finsland.
A long time ago, Counselor Hindman resigned from the council, and they had a special council meeting, not in open session, not with the general public there, but there were only at the time eight councilors there, and the decision was, there were two people that applied for the position, myself and another person, and that other person was chosen by Mayor Cotter because it was an even decision, it was a 4-4 decision at the time. That was when Kevin Peterson was appointed to the council. Would we be doing this interview or listening to these candidates in an open session, or would it be some sort of a meet with the council, let them make the decision? I guess is my question.
I don't, I'm not quite sure that that would qualify for a closed session of the council.
I don't know that it was a closed session, but I know it wasn't, it was a meeting in the mayor's conference room at the time, in the old building.
Special session.
It was a meeting with the council members, the eight of them, and we were each spent about 10 or 15 minutes interviewing with the council. I don't know what the procedure would be now, but that's what we did then. Went into Mayor Cotter's conference room and sat and talked with those people.
I think that would trigger the open meeting requirements right there, so.
I'm not objecting, I'm just wondering what the procedure would be, how it would be followed.
I'm not quite sure that that procedure was correct back then.
You know, as I sit here thinking about it, I can't think of the exception, the statutory exception that would allow a closed session to interview potential temporary council appointments. I guess I think of this as sort of cousin to the selection of council leadership. I don't think we've ever contemplated selecting a council president and/or vice president in a closed session, and that's kind of a similar format. People are nominated and they, they have a chance to address, not necessarily one-on-one interviews or a series of interviews with the council, but they have a chance to address you folks and identify why they think they should be elected to that leadership role. I can hit the books on that. I don't, I'm doubtful. I doubt that there's an exemption that would allow a closed session.
I have no objection to doing it in an open session, it's certainly not a problem, but it just seems to me it was done in a little different procedure 12 years ago, so.
Counselor Finacy.
I think we could kind of debate this all night as far as what format. I would recommend, as long as it's all right with the council president, to have the council president work with city clerk, city attorney, maybe mayor, and formulate some sort of a process. I'm wondering, in the past also, there's been some defined questions to be asked, and I don't know if that's going to be a process or not, so I don't know what the easiest way is, instead of debating it on the council floor tonight.
Well, I would not object.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.2, Finance Director Vito is requesting approval of the updated 2014 CIP with tentative approval for the updated 2015 through 2017 CIP.
It is a pleasure. Counselor Sweeney.
I have some questions, just to, I understand what we're doing here. The first item, it says we're decreasing the general fund transfer from, so we're taking 5.73 out, and then we're putting 242 back in, right? Okay. And so, is part of that 5.73 from 2012, or is that previous periods?
The 5.73 was originally budgeted for 2014.
Okay.
The 242 was generated from excess revenue over expenditures from prior years that by ordinance is required to go into the CIP. So, I just wanted to make sure I handled those separately.
Okay, and then the new revenue source for the tax increment of 800,000, does that have to be paid back?
Yes, by the, that will be tax levy debt, because it's now within our capital improvement program.
Right, so that has to be, so that's a, okay. And the last item is simply, we're borrowing a million dollars?
We're borrowing more than that.
Well, no, the last item, the last item.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It just seems to me, and because I don't understand, it seems to be a little convoluted the way we did that, but I, that's why I had to ask the questions. Thank you.
I do have, I did have some opening comments, if you wanted to hear those, and, okay. Okay, the comments I was going to make were really more of the, kind of the mile-high view of looking at the CIP, and then obviously, we've got mayor and department heads here that can answer specific questions on any projects, if you have them. And we do have new councilors, and so I wanted to just give kind of a brief summary, summary of what we're doing tonight with the capital improvement program and what it is. And this is a program that is for pretty much our larger ticket purchases. They have to meet two criteria. They have to be a cost of $10,000 or more, and it has to be a useful life of the asset of 10 years or more. We do make one exception to that, and we do have the squad cars in this program, I guess just for simplicity, but they don't last 10 years. The capital improvement projects are for any project that doesn't exist within the enterprise funds. Those enterprise funds, the golf course, the wastewater plant, landfill, stormwater, they all take care of their own capital improvements through the user fees. So, this is anything that doesn't fall within those enterprise funds or doesn't fall within a tax increment district. It's a six-year program that we have, and this program goes through for the years 2012 to 2017. I have a suggestion for the future to consider, I'm not asking it be considered tonight, but I'd like to have the council consider having a rolling six-year program instead of a static, because what we do is, tonight we're asking for approval of 2014 formally, with tentative approval for only the next three years, where I think it might be a better idea to ask for the formal approval for one year and then get tentative approval for the next five, so we can keep it moving. We had changed from a three-year program to a six-year program just beginning in 2012, so it wasn't as big of an issue when we had a three-year program, but anyway, that's for, that's for another night, not for tonight. The revenue, what pays for the capital improvement program, currently, we have the issuance of debt covers about 56 percent of the costs in our CIP. We have the oil pipeline terminal tax revenue, the majority of that is the oil pipeline terminal tax revenue. The majority of that is, stays within the CIP for funding projects. The transfers from the general fund over the whole program represent 13%. And then we have the remaining 11% comes from grants and a whole host of other smaller sources of revenue for the program. The expenses of the program mainly fall into three areas: buildings and facilities that we have, infrastructure, streets, major road projects, sidewalks, and then things in parks and trails. And, and then the third category is equipment, our larger equipment items. So for 2014, the, the, what I've done is just outlined the changes from when this original program was brought forward in 2012. And Counselor Sweeney, you've already touched on two of them. The transfer in of $800,000 from Tiff District Nine is a new source of revenue for this program. And also an additional million dollars instead of issuing debt of $3 million in 2014, mayor's recommending $4 million. On the expense side of things, we have a couple of, more than a couple of changes, but the main ones are the insertion of some funding for the Barker's Island Marina. And also the Super 1 road work on 22nd Avenue and 23rd Avenue. That's, that's a new project that has come up since this program was last adopted as well. A couple of dollar amounts, they're lesser, but the police and fire departments both have changes that they've requested since their, their program was initially estimated. And those are really the, the highlights of the changes since this has been brought forward.
Thank you. I noticed Barker's Island, there's going to be a replacement of, from what I can figure, all the docks and some electrical work? Is that, if I'm looking at that correctly?
Yeah.
So, do we not set aside money for, for the Marina?
Well, that's, that's an excellent point. And it's something I wish would happen because ideally, in our capital improvement program, we wouldn't have to do what I call the pay-as-you-go, pay-as-things-break.
Right.
Pay-as-things, these are big-ticket items. And ideally, it would be much better to have, we could look at every single facility we own, whether it's the municipal services building, or Fairlon, or golf course, clubhouse, anything that we own. The ideal way to budget would be to set aside X amount for repairs or maintenance or major improvements every single year in this capital improvement program. However, that hasn't been the way that things have been done.
Oh.
So it's very obvious, because it does get a little chaotic when you have, something goes wrong and you have a problem in a building. All of a sudden, you need $500,000. And it makes it more peaks and valleys in funds, funding requests.
Okay. But just a follow-up then. If that's true, why do we have to, I don't know how many docks there are, 17, whatever the number is, why do we have to replace them all in one year?
I would direct that to Mary or Jeff Getzmann.
Oh, okay. Maybe, maybe it's necessary. I don't know. Maybe, they said they're 30 years old or something. I did read that, but...
Yeah, they're original infrastructure, Counselor. And I'm going to invite Mr. Radke to the podium. There are, what is it, Joe, nine, 11?
Yes, Counselor Sweeney, there are actually 10 piers. Eight of the original piers were installed, I believe, in the late fall of 1979. And were in service in the spring of 1980. So we're in our 34th season with the original dock infrastructure. Two additional piers were added, I believe, in 1986, if I recall right. We're not looking at doing the whole Marina. What we're trying to do is do some phased upgrades that we think are well past due. The, we, we, in 2009, we kind of started this process with putting new flotation under the docks. So we're not replacing the docks. What we're looking to do is improve some of the dock structure. So we put new flotation under, which fortunately, we were able to fund with some money that was set aside over a couple of year period from our lease payments. And, and that was critical to do first. Now we have decking, which is 34-plus years old, that is badly deteriorated, is in some cases a hazard because it's very splintered. And we try to replace boards as we can, as necessary, but it's in a situation now that we need to do more than that. So... So what we've identified here is three piers that we'd like to focus on first, that need, they're our largest piers and the, and the largest revenue generators for us. And do a phased project where we would do redecking, electrical upgrade on those piers, and possibly some additional work as money would be available.
Let me ask you a question. So there's no money set, you alluded to before, there was money set aside from lease payments for this type of...
There was for a couple of year period, yes. That was some money that was the council directed to have a proportion of the lease payment set aside, yes. That was for the flotation work, that we were able to use some money to do that, yes.
Right. But that's not done anymore?
Uh, no, it isn't.
If I may, if I may, going back in history, when we constructed the Marina, we did set aside a reserve back in the 1980 era. What happened in soon years, I don't know. Counselor McKenzie.
Oh, thanks, thanks, Mayor. Under the expenditures, there's a, there's a decrease in the Billings Park improvements of $370,000. And Mary, I'm assuming that that's part of the Phase Two of that project, following the 21st Street project? And if, if so, if we're reducing that, what are, what are we doing without eliminating that project?
It's actually still part of Phase One, Mick. Phase One was a very large phase in our Billings Park master plan. And what we've completed, excuse me, is the, a new gazebo, new restroom, new play area. And that comes to about a quarter of a million dollars, 230, 240 in that range. And with Rotary's generous gift of $20,000, we also completed the Japanese garden, which is actually a part of Phase Two. What we have done is we've reduced the scope of the Billings Park project plan in order to preserve some of the dollars for the Marina, which we see as a slightly more critical. A, Joe has identified original infrastructure, some, some hazards that we want to take care of. And of course, it is revenue generating for the city in a way that Billings Park is not. But what we're going to do without is we, our original plan recommended all curb and gutter throughout the roadway into Billings Park. So that's something that we've decided we can live without. And further, the recommendations were that we completely resurfaced the lower trail. And we're now recommending to crack, seal, and fill it. And so there's a savings there. And then the road work comes with some commensurate earthwork and other reductions that make up the sum.
So is there still going to be some blacktop work going into the Billings Park proper?
Yes, yeah. The, the reduced, the reduced scope plan calls for us to upgrade the electrical capacity so that we can put new street lighting in the park, and to resurface the road with a 12-inch base, and to resurface the pedestrian pathways, which are five feet in width, with an eight-inch base, which we think all of that will hold up far better than what we see there now. And then to crack, fill, and seal coat the lower trail. And then we would like to make some repairs to the lower retaining walls.
I see.
Which are of a Roosevelt-era vintage as well. And then with, you know, design and contingency, we get a grand total of 615, 193.
Well, that sounds like it's still going to be sufficient repairs. It's still going to look nice, especially, like you say, the gazebo. I've been in there a couple of times. It's, that's a beautiful, beautiful building.
It's a...
The bathroom facilities is a big, big plus.
I, yeah, I agree, Counselor. And I, I think these, this reduced scope is still going to be a very nice project that we can all live with. And then finally, I would add that we plan on restoring that little bridge, which the neighbors and the public have continuously asked for as part of our FEMA flood projects, because the pedestrian portion of the bridge, and the bridge itself was damaged during the flood.
You're talking about the bridge that's at the head of the entrance there?
That, yes, that leads into the park. So that will also come to us overall, just not in the, not in the CIP.
Right, right. Okay. Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks for doing that.
Any further discussion? Counselor Feisler.
I just want to make a real quick comment. I just, after going through this CIP and looking at some of the adjustments and that, I want to commend the departments, police, fire, public works, everybody in Marina that, that's, with, with the, some of the adjustments and seeing some of this money put into the actual infrastructure of some of the city's buildings, some of the city's property, I think we need to keep that on our radar screen because it's those type of things that can come back to bite us really quick, kind of like what's been talked about. And I can't help but echo Counselor Sweeney's comments or concerns about not allocating money out of whether it's the Barker's Island lease or other things for the, those times that we need it. It's, it gets very difficult to try to plan in a CIP for some of those infrastructure issues, failures. So I think we need to keep that on our, on our agenda as we start moving forward with looking at the budget and the CIP as we continue on. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, just a question on the, if you look at Attachment D, if you have that in front of you. The question is in regards to the decking of, I guess there's no total project cost for Barker's Island. I mean, I see breakdowns, but it doesn't tell exactly if that's for the, the whole 2014 and 2015, or if those are, if the, if the whole, if every unit was to be replaced, as far as the decking?
Yes, Counselor, that's because we don't know.
Okay.
We, we need to form a plan that incorporates some electrical upgrades and some other things that go under that decking. And we think it's wise to do that in advance of the redecking. And so we need to form that plan and get a, and get a better budgetary number. But we thought it prudent to begin the work on those three piers that Joe has identified as a priority.
Okay. Then as far as the decking itself, I don't know what's on there now, but yellow pine versus maybe a cedar versus a composite, what, have you looked at it, see which one is, will wear the longest?
Yeah. Actually, Joe has some thoughts about that, that I'm sure he'll be willing to share with you.
Counselor, there, there are a lot of decking materials to look at. And I've done a lot of research myself. And while the composites are very attractive and they have a lot of appeal, there's still a strong reason to look at wood. It's very easy to work with. It's got a much better price point, generally speaking. It's, in terms of the ability to replace it in future years as things, you know, get damaged or whatever, it's going to be easier to replace a board with another board than possibly a composite that might not match or be from a different, you know, manufacturer. There's lots of things to consider. I'm not saying that, you know, composite couldn't be used, but I think given the application at the Marina, and I've talked to other people that have done upgrades at other Marinas, there's a strong reason it'd still work with wood. So I guess that answers your question on that front.
All right. Thank you. And then one, just one last question. Mary, of the difference between the park and the amount that is you, going to be used for Barker's Island, what, do you have a rough dollar amount that, I mean, how much do we save by doing the reductions in, in Billings Park?
It's approximately $390,000, Counselor.
Difference, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Counselor Olson.
Joe, I got a question for you. With the southern yellow pine, is this just raw southern yellow pine, or is it treated southern yellow pine at .40 or .60 for...
Yeah. You know, I can't speak specifically to what would be the, the grade of lumber. I believe it would be a treated product.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and Jeff maybe could, you know, we've, we've been looking at, you know, some different, different decking products out there, so...
Yeah, it'd definitely be treated. I don't know what number the level of treatment is, but we're going to be looking at that. Is that, is that what we can get? Yeah, some high-grade.
Pressure-treated.
Pressure-treated lumber, yeah. That's what we're looking at.
Thank you.
And while, you know, obviously, we're, you know, we're dealing with aged decking, the fact is, is that we're, we're still, at 34 years, it's still structurally sound. And that's what I, you know, when I've looked at other materials, while some of these are very nice-looking and everything, I don't know what their long-term durability, you know, will be. And so I guess I'm, you know, pretty happy with overall that we've gotten 34, you know, very functional years. I mean, we're going to have a few more years before this gets done as well. So that's why, you know, again, I think wood has some real strong selling points.
Further discussion? What is the pleasure?
Second.
Heard a motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry.
Item 7.3, Public Works Director Getzmann is requesting to award bids for the Tower Avenue arch footings to low bidder Chippewa Concrete Services for $48,260.
Well, if you don't mind, I'll address this. As many of you know, probably all too well, the arch that none of us have ever seen is a passion of mine. I believe it could be, will be a cornerstone, corner, corner cap for the Tower Avenue project. And in looking at that with the possibility of having that arch brought back to the community, and realizing that once the concrete street is down, it's going to be very difficult and extremely expensive to revisit that site of Broadway and Tower, to place the pedestals 10 feet, I believe it is below ground, 10 or 20, I forget, and also the conduit necessary underneath the street. So we did take a, a look at that. I asked the public works to have a design constructed or completed. And we estimated it to be about $45,000, plus or minus. Chippewa Concrete, who is doing Tower Avenue, was the only bidder. It is at $48,000 for that particular part of the project. So what does that mean? I'd like to have this approved. And I am going to be submitting to the council and the public in the near future, a plan for a fundraiser, if you will, a capital campaign with the private sector, through the private sector, with some support from the city, to have that arch constructed, hopefully in 2014 or 15. I believe it's an important icon for the community, whether you're a child, or an adult, or a senior citizen, or a young person. People have some familiarity with that, even though literally none of us have ever seen it, because it was taken down in the 20s by Mayor Baxter, because as the articles read, he didn't like it. And it was starting to rust. I believe that it, it is the, the icon that this community was most recognized for, and it will be a commemorative arch to the veterans of our general greater area. Counselor Sweeney?
I'm always conflicted by spending money and shortage of money that the city has. On one day, we have to do whatever we have to do, perhaps for the garbage system, because we have to increase fees, or whatever. Then we have to spend money for some of these. My personal opinion, I'm always conflicted, but my, my personal opinion on this one is that, I'm not in favor of that. I think this is not a good use of taxpayers' money. And I realize that if you were to get 100% funded by contributions, that's a different story. But to spend money today for this with the hope, unless you know more about it than I do, and I'm sure you do, that you have five phone calls and you got the money. I don't know that. But it would just seem to me that we're putting the horse before the cart here. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I understand that. But we can either move forward. There'd be crises. There've been, you know, I've been in this business for 40-some years. And none of it has come without a crisis, crisis, or a period of time where conflicting interests prevail. That is the common norm. That is the norm. But I've always had the belief and optimism, and I always had the belief that we need to either secure the tent and paint it rather than take it down. it rather than take it down. And I just believe that this particular part of downtown is a crucial element with regard to the future attraction, as well as the reason for people to come there. It's a piece of our history. It's probably one of the major pieces of our history as far as structure is concerned. And in my opinion, that is not a lot of money to expend, and it will come out of the contingency of the Tower Avenue project.
Counselor Olson?
In your capital campaign that we're looking at to raise money from the private sector, could we include the $48,000 for down the road in a capital campaign so that the, the cost would be absorbed from private donations?
Certainly is a possibility, but once again, I know we're putting a lot of money on Tower Avenue, but for each individual project that we move on, I believe we have to show some interest in, rather than looking for money from elsewhere all the time. I just believe very strongly in this. It's, it's been on my mind longer than I've been mayor. And I just believe that it's something that the public will embrace, not just locally, but those that do remember it from history, and also those that come to our community.
I guess what I'm getting at, Mayor, is that if, if the donations came in in kind, that we would be able to accept this money towards the footings?
Well, it's a good point. We can, if you will, put out the call for the entire project coming from the private sector. I don't know that that would be embraceable by the public, private sector, if the public doesn't want to put something into, but I can certainly look at that.
Mayor?
Yes?
My question is, do you have an estimate of the cost for this arch after the, the footings are done and everything? How much the total project will cost?
That's a good question, and I've, I've asked Public Works to work with the architectural firm that has begun the process long ago to see what, what it would cost with regard to the engineering architecture, but also, more importantly, with regard to the type of product that would be used to construct it. There's all sorts of product out there that is much more available today than it was back in the 20s, of course, including composites. So we're looking at, we will be looking at that. What I will bring back to the council is a full evaluation of, of the design, the estimated costs, and how I would propose to go about doing the capital campaign, and I will take the leadership role in that effort. If I'm proven wrong, I'll be proven wrong. But I, I think it's worthy of moving forward to make sure that we aren't wrong before we vote it down.
Counselor?
Yes, you did mention in passing the source of funds for the footings. Could you explain that a little bit more, please?
There's a contingency on the Tower Avenue project, and of course, the Tower Avenue project is not completed, but I'm proposing we take it out of the contingency that is there from the, the estimated bid in relationship to the actual award.
Counselor Finacy?
I see both sides of this issue, and, you know, I'm a more, a little bit siding with, with Counselor Sweeney as far as the amount of money being spent on this during this time. But the question I've got, and it gives us more for, for Jeff, if we do not do the footings at this point, which, which I understand this is the best time to do it, you're going to get the best bang for the buck, is it possible and feasible to do it after the fact?
Counselor, I'd say it's, is it possible? Yes, of course, it's possible. It, it would entail going in and taking out, you know, saw cutting, removing some panels of basically sidewalk we're putting in right now, and auguring the sonotubes down there. They're giant sonotubes, like a traffic signal base is basically what these are equivalent to, probably like a three footer in diameter. And so you'd, you'd have some more expense and probably some more mess there to clean up, and of course, try to match all that back in nice. It's easier to do it, you know, when you're up, on the upfront side of it.
Right. But as, and, and as long as it's in planning stage, if we do not go with the footings, it's not like they're going to bury utilities under there. It's going to be free and clear.
You're talking about the actual space where we'd be coordinating the sonotube?
The actual space, yeah.
As far as I'm aware, that, that would be open, right? There's, there's one plan in each corner. We've, we've basically placed them in, in the construction plan to avoid other conflicting utilities and things.
Okay, thanks.
What is the pleasure? Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, Jeff, I'm going to be a, a regular citizen out there, and I'm going to ask, what's the chances of Chippewa Concrete, maybe, since this is a tribute to, will be a tribute to the veterans, you know, of all ages, what's the chance of them maybe, once it's approved, donating whatever portion back to, to us for that reason?
Again, I'm making static here. That's a great question, Counselor. I, I guess I'm not sure how to answer that. We've not asked, approached them on that. Obviously, we put out a construction plan for bid, and they were the only bidder. And given that they're controlling the job set right now and have easiest access and everything else, this is, this is where they bid it. So all we can do is approach them, I guess.
Okay.
And then just one last question. Cost-wise, cheaper now or later?
I'm assuming it's cheaper now, based on the disturbance, kind of like I was describing for Counselor Finacy there. If we have to go back and patch in sidewalk and remove sidewalk, it'll be added cost.
All right, thank you. Counselor Finley?
I get a feeling there's a bit of a sense of urgency about this because we're nearing the completion of these projects. And if we postpone this, I don't think we have a great deal of time to make a decision on this one way or the other. But that concrete work will be done in a matter of just a couple of months. And if we, if we wait, they're going to have to tear it up again and do it over again, or whatever you say, put in these footings again. I don't think there's any reason why we have to postpone our decision. I think that we should do that tonight, and I, I second Warren's motion to approve.
For this, motion and second. Further discussion? Counselor Olson?
Can I give my opinion from a construction standpoint? It is definitely cheaper to do it now. With the sonotubes that you're talking about, there will be electrical outlets that have to be cut into the sonotubes, and it's a lot easier to do with an open hole because they run the conduit to the existing wiring that will be in the street, whether it's a lateral or a main line. It's a lot easier to drop the cages, the steel cages, into, and it is a lot easier to, the, the labor costs. My only question would be that I think Chippewa could have done a little better job. When you get one bidder on a project, they're going to tend to nick you. But to answer anybody's questions as to cost, it's in my professional opinion that it's a lot cheaper to do it now.
Any further discussion? All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Item 7.4, Public Works Director Getzmann is requesting to award the bids for the Highway 2 traffic signal and road improvements to the low bidder, RJS Construction Group LLC, for $634,000.
For the motion and second discussion, Counselor Olson, Counselor Bender, I'm sorry.
How close is this bid, this 634 thou, to the projected cost?
Counselor, we're actually about $180,000 over where we started on this project. But we have added some work, and we're bidding, the curb work as we bid it is something we've never done in Superior, where we're just taking off the edge of the pavement and grading a small four-foot area next to the pavement, putting a new curb, and then paving to match it. So that's, but that is where we're at, yeah.
And that would make up for that extra $180,000?
Yeah, that's, that's, it's part of, part of it's this time of year, part of it's that everybody's busy, and part of it is that those items are more expensive to do than what we were anticipating. We didn't have a good feel for those on the background as far as estimating.
Was this the only bidder?
RJS was the only bidder, yeah. And in fact, this is the second time we've bid it. And they did come in a hair lower this time than the first time, oddly enough, but about $5,000 less.
Could we rebid it in a month or two and hope to come in lower?
The complication here is that we've, we've got an agreement with the Super One folks, and we're trying to get all this work done and to match up to their site work and make everything come together nice there. But we did add the street lighting and things. There, there's about $65,000 that were added from the original. We've added some storm sewer, and we're redoing that alley sanitary, and also the storm sewer there, repaving that alley between 4th and 5th. So there's, and this does include installation of signals down there, East Second and 20 Second.
Counselor, you raised a good point. It was the only bidder. And another good example that's even more interesting is East 5th Street. We had no bidders. So what I hear, and maybe Counselor Olson knows certainly more than I, they're all busy. And they, they plan their year by bidding out early, and they're, they're bringing in trucks from all over the place just to keep projects going that are out there. So the bids are coming at higher if, if they don't feel they can provide the bodies or the ability to get it done.
Counselor?
If you don't mind, I, I would like to comment on that. One of the very unfortunate things is the flood of last year. And with FEMA money that was coming in in stages, and you had to have projects started and/or partially funded, matched, or whatever the case may be, there are only so many highway-heavy contractors in this area. And with, with the unfortunate with the, the storms and projected projects that have been out, whether it's current short-term or long-term projects that were either funded by state or federal monies, everybody is busy. I, I'm very happy to say that out of 780 active members in my labor union, I've got 11 on my out-of-work list. So it's, it's an unfortunate fortune for us. So that is one of the reasons.
Mayor, if I could, just quickly, I was going to just tie onto Counselor Olson's point. Part, part of what we've noticed in our own list, if you remember, in April, we brought you a list that had all the projects for this year and the next year. And we have 46 or 47 projects of our own listed on that, you know, for Superior. I mean, it's everything from the landfill to Tower Avenue to whatever. And there's, there's a ton of work going on. Half of the stuff in town is ripped up. So, so there's a lot going on, and that's, those same people, as you point out, are all, who, who our audience is to bid all of these different projects.
I've got 68 current projects going on that are involving these, these contractors and workforce.
Yeah. The other point I wanted to mention to the council is on the signal portion of the project, you will see on the, at the next meeting, we're going to be actually buying that, the signal equipment that gets installed on the footings, as well as the, the street lighting on a state contract. So that wasn't bid as part of this work. I mean, the installation portion is bid here, but the actual equipment buy is going to be by the city to save sales tax, and we'll buy it direct on a contract and get it delivered for the contractor.
I, I just got a question. Is because we don't have any competitive bidding out there, is that because we wait too long to put the bids out? We're not ahead of the game as far as scheduling stuff? I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll go back to my comment on the 46 projects idea. I mean, there's, they all take months to engineer, to get permitting for. Some of these, we tried to get with the Super One site work, and that we didn't get their site work until around May, when they were getting their stuff put together. So it takes a month to bid the project. I mean, so kind of here we are, three months out. We've got our plan put together. So some of these are just landing lopsided, trying to coordinate them with other things that are out there to coordinate them with. So, but you're absolutely right. The later in the year it gets, a lot of times that does happen, yeah. I think it can impact us negatively.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 8.1, Mayor Hagan is requesting the City Council receive and file the Douglas County Resolution on Animal Shelter Funding contingent upon adoption by the council to award construction contracts.
I need to explain that. I, I didn't mean to have it receive and filed. What I tried to elaborate in my writing was to receive it in relationship to accepting it when we know what the final cost of the project is, and we're moving forward on it. So I ask that you take that under your consideration. Counselor?
Mayor, yeah, thank you, first off, you know, for bringing this forward and for explaining that. I think the only way to clarify it, I think, is to really make some sort of a motion that we change the receive and file, because my, my experience with receive and file is, is not good. That's something that, you know, usually makes something go away forever. I, I would rather see this read as that we're accepting their money with a contingency, whether it's built or not. If, if it's, if it's not built for some odd reason, then they obviously get their money back. So.
I'm certainly fine with that.
Okay, that would, okay. So I'll make that, that, make that amendment to the motion, if there is a motion?
You just made that.
Nice.
Second?
For the motion and second, to accept the contribution from the county contingent upon construction of a shelter. Am I correct on that language?
Yeah.
There is one person signed up to speak this evening, Rick Salesdud.
Yeah, my name is Rick Salesdud, Animal Allies over in Duluth, and we're proud to be managing your shelter here in Superior. And I want to thank Mayor Hagan for his patience throughout this project. The staff has been just wonderful to work with and argue with and wrestle with. And the City Council has been great to meet you and work with you. We're hopeful of a positive vote for accepting the county money and then the motion 8.2 that follows. And Animal Allies is proud to work with you all. And in the next few months, you're going to get a little tired of seeing us, seeing us all if we have a positive vote, because we're going to fill any funding gap to the best of our ability with a capital campaign ourselves to help you all out. And while we're Animal Allies, I would just like to state that we will be the Allies of Superior in the next few months to get this project done. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald?
Yes, I just have a question. By approving these two, um, 8.1 and 8.2, are we agreeing that we're going to accept the county animals, and we're agreeing that we'll build the 86 square foot, 8600 square foot building at 3.1 million or estimated cost?
That's correct. The city will contribute the 2.3. The balance has to be derived from capital campaign as well as the gap and operating costs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And as you know, I think most people know, this, this whole project has hinged on the county's participation. And the county overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly supported this. It was very surprisingly, but they were very upbeat about it. And I really think that this is something that is starting this bond that we, we need to have with the county and a collaboration and the working effort between the county on these projects, just like we did with this building. So I think this is a great thing, and I think this thing can only grow as time goes on. You know, people come and go, and they have better, have different ideas, let me put it that way. And so I think this is, this is a great thing. It's a great start, and I really appreciate everybody. I really appreciate the county for, for what they've done.
Any further discussion? Counselor Sweeney?
I, I need a couple to clarify. Is the county money for operational, or is that a capital amount of money?
It'll be, I believe the resolution says we can decide how to use it, but I think the desired use was operational costs, offset operational costs.
But that's a one-time amount of money?
It's a, it's a 10-year.
Well, right, but the money, amount of money is the one-time, okay. And then the funding from Animal Allies, is, is, did I hear the gentleman, it's a gap financing from them? If the money, if it costs 3.5, and they raise 100,000, the city exclusive of the county is going to pay 3.4?
No. That's, the way, the way I, when we get to 8.2, I can describe the process that I elaborated. So that we, here, let me, let me say this. We've had this discussion for the better part of five-plus years. And the belief that I have is unless we work through the particular points necessary to make the final decision to construct and move forward, we, there's some discovery that has to take place here. We don't know what it's going to cost unless we put it out for bid. We can't put it out for bid unless we have a fully designed, A&E design. So... So we can talk or put it on the table for a long time, but we're never gonna know any of this discovery until we go through these various points that I've laid out, and maybe more. So the decision that you make here tonight to move forward is to move the process along so that we can move to final design, have the site requirements completed by Public Works and Engineering at Bear Creek, engage Animal Allies and the Humane Society and former RF to begin the formal capital campaign and the other items I've got listed here. The problem is, we have discussed capital campaign issues with potential contributors over the last couple of years, not very aggressively, and the...but the reason we haven't been aggressive is they wanna know what they're bid...what they're...they wanna see and they wanna know what they're contributing to. Otherwise, they don't wanna talk. They need to see what are we actually doing and where is it going to be. The first discussions with potential contributors or investors, if you will, was where are you gonna put this thing? Well, we had five or seven sites, but where are you gonna put it? We didn't know. The second question is, I need to see what I'm putting my money into. I need to see that, not just the schematic or elevated design, but the design itself. And the third thing, of course, is how much is it gonna cost? We have estimates floating all over the place, but until it goes out to bid, we'll never know what the cost is. Counselor McDonald?
My question is, the 2.5 that we put in, and let's say we build it, we still have to operate it. We still have to have that money coming through, and where is that gonna come from going forward? That's what most of my constituents keep asking me.
That goes to point number four on my recommendation. Engage Animal Allies, the Humane Society, Douglas County, and the former Animal Rescue Federation to assist with any gap in annual operating costs through similar campaigns on an annual basis. And number three is the capital campaign for the gap and construction.
Mayor, with all due respect, point of order, we need to approve 8.1 before we continue with discussion on 8.2, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We need to approve 8.1 before we move on to discussion on 8.2. We didn't have a vote yet.
It's fine with me. The council agree upon that?
Yes.
Okay. Then I will ask, and I'll...my recommendation with regard, let me read it so everybody can...
I think you said we need a vote on 8.1.
Oh, you want...okay, I'm sorry. I guess I need my other hearing aid, too. The vote on 8.1, it's before you, or the motion is before you? Any further discussion on 8.1?
Call a vote, Mayor.
Random rule call.
The motion and second was to accept the funding from Douglas County contingent upon adoption by the council to award construction contracts. Counselor...I don't know. Counselor Manzolia. Counselor Finsland?
Aye, yes.
Counselor Herrick?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Bender?
Yes.
Counselor Sweeney?
No.
Counselor McDonald? Seven to two, the motion passes.
Motion carried.
Item 8.2, Mayor Hagan is recommending to approve the necessary steps outlined in the document, which upon satisfaction will allow construction of an animal shelter as early as spring of 2014.
A motion and second. Discussion? Counselor McKenzie?
I'll go first. Getting back to what I said before about getting bids out early, if we approve this tonight and get the bids out early, right, maybe we'll have more than one person bidding.
To that point, to that point, Director Getzmann, is it of the belief that this could go to bid in January or February at the latest, if the design ensues?
Yeah, I think that's pretty safe. I mean, we need to renegotiate a contract with our architect and then move forward, yeah, if that's the wish of the council.
Counselor McKenzie?
Thanks again, Mayor. When you say "outlined in the document," you mean this document, the 8.2, or do you have something else?
No, 8.2.
8.2 is the document.
8.2.
Yeah. Well, thanks a lot. I really appreciate this, and as everybody knows, and I think a lot of people out there are extremely happy that we're finally getting to this point. It's been five years and thousands of hours of hard work and dedication and research by many people and organizations. It all started with the Humane Society of the United States' recommendation to combine the city and county shelter in an effort to save...actually save money and resources. It was...it's been a well-thought-out project all these years, culminating with a plan now. I think that it was a kind of a compromise, and that's gonna be a money saver as well for an 8600 square foot energy-efficient building. We have a beautiful site at the Bear Creek Park. We have city bonding in place, I believe, for the past three years. Gene, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's been bonding for at least three years now?
We have funds remaining, $2,221,000.
How much?
$2,221,000 remains of the bond proceeds.
Okay, yeah, I know there's been some spend-off. I think there's been probably 100,000 maybe spent on this project so far. But now we have the county's contribution, which is fantastic. Again, this whole project is hinged on that, and this is going to ensure...definitely gonna ensure a successful capital campaign to raise additional funds for the project. Finally, we're finally gonna be able to replace this deplorable, outdated city pound building that we're currently using with a...we'll be able to replace it with a new and much more humane animal adoption center rather than a pound. And I just wanna say thanks to everyone who's worked on this so hard to make this dream a functioning reality. So thanks very much, Mayor, and everybody else that's worked on the project.
Counselor Fennessy?
I just want a little clarification. We had mentioned that the bids could go out in January, which I think is the best time for bidding. You know, everybody's hungry in that, and I don't...I think that's great. However, that's only if we can get the gap funding raised, correct?
Well, that's a good question. We won't know what the gap funding...necessary gap funding will be until we get the bid. Just receiving a bid, it doesn't mean we have...
Well, yeah, and I mean, you know, I think that could put some bidders at odds because they don't know if they're gonna get the job. So they bid it out, I think...so we gotta be careful on how we do that. So I mean, the less gap we can go into that bidding process with, the much better we're gonna be. So I just wanted to...wanted to make sure that I was clear with that, that if we, even if we put it out for bid and we don't fill that gap funding, it isn't going anywhere.
I think ideally, we'd wanna...I mean, we're working with a budgetary number, and we'll work towards final design, and we'll tighten that up. And you would wanna work in parallel to try to get that capital campaign going and raise as much of that difference that we have between what we know is promised now and what's left, and hopefully get all of that, you know, and be ready to go, and then we'll know the real number when it comes in.
I only bring this up to really emphasize with the public to really watch for some of these capital campaign efforts, to really get this off the ground and get going on it. Thanks.
If I may, let me, for the clarity of what I'm proposing, so everybody understands and doesn't have a misunderstanding of what I'm proposing. Recently, the council approved Bear Creek Park as the official site for the shelter. We have had discussions for going on six years, and to be honest with you, I don't know that we're any further ahead right now than we have been for the six years without making specific steps available for discovery. So what I'm recommending is this, and one hinges on the rest. They follow...they follow from one to seven, they follow an order that I believe is the order, it may be very...may vary, in order to find that final discovery, whether we're gonna go yea or nay. Number one, approve moving forward to complete the architectural and engineering design and produce bidding documents for an 8600 square foot animal shelter that will serve Superior and Douglas County. The review committee for approval of design will consist of members of Public Works, Animal Allies, Humane Society, the former RF Federation, and citizens. Number two, provide for Public Works to determine detailed site design requirement, grading, parking, utility costs, water, sanitary sewer connections for the shelter to be located at Bear Creek Park. Three, engage Animal Allies, the Humane Society, Douglas County, and the former Animal Rescue Federation to conduct a capital campaign that will provide the balance of funding for construction of the shelter. This is concurrent with, I think, Counselor Fennessy was talking about. Four, engage Animal Allies and the Humane Society, Douglas County, and the former Animal Rescue Federation to assist with any gap and annual operating costs through similar campaigns on an annual basis. And I want to point out that I think this has been a very great concern of the Finance Director, myself, other members in the council, and the public, is if we build it, we need to have funds to operate it. Otherwise, we've made a grave error. Five, issue invitations to bid on the shelter construction no later than February 2014. Six, upon receipt of qualified bids, evaluate the closure of the construction gap and the annual operating cost estimates or commitments to determine the timeliness of construction and balance with the revenue necessary. There's a tipping point, one way or the other. Seven, negotiate a final contract with Animal Allies for the management and operation shelter. What I'm submitting to you is what I believe is we've had, I don't even care to guess how many hours and days that people like Gene Vito and Jeff Getzmann and Todd Janico and Mick McKenzie and some others in the audience here and on the council have put into this effort when we have really not accomplished a whole lot. Because without these particular discovery points, we'll never be able to make an evaluative decision. So I'm looking for the discovery points to offer the facts that will allow an educated and evaluative decision. I know it's a tough issue, and it's been a tough issue, and it'll probably continue to be a tough issue. There is a motion on the floor, and I'll ask if there's any other discussion. If not, I ask all in favor...I'm sorry, Counselor Sweeney?
We have a rule call, both on that, please.
Yes.
Counselor Herrick?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Bender?
Yes.
Counselor Sweeney?
No.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Manzolia?
Yes.
Seven to two, the motion passes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item 8.3, Mayor Hagan is submitting the proposed 2014 general fund budget.
For the motion and second, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 8.4, Mayor Hagan is recommending to maintain our general fund reserves at our current levels, and that an annual review of reserve levels be reported to the mayor and the common council at the close of each annual audit.
Pleased to pleasure. Your motion and second, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any further business to come before this body? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I got...
I'm sorry.
I got one question, because I was driving around Tampa, and I seen signs about streets closed tomorrow. Can Mary give us an update on this problem we're having with the ash tree removal?
I left a packet for each of you at your desk tonight. The item was not agendized for discussion on your agenda this evening, but I'm hoping you will have a look at the packet. It's complete with a press release and frequently asked questions, photographs, and so on. Briefly, last week, we announced that we have a confirmed infestation of an exotic invasive pest known as the Emerald Ashbor. The infestation was found in the north end of the city, and we believe that the 3,000 or so public trees that the city manages in the road right-of-ways, the parks, and at N'Maji Golf Course are subject to a serious threat of decimation over the next one to four years. That number doesn't include privately-owned ash trees, nor does it include the ash that are located in the Superior Municipal Forest. So we have begun to remove ash in the north end neighborhood, and what I intend to do is to have a meeting of the Tree Board next week and to bring you a full presentation with recommendations, preliminary recommendations, at your next council meeting. And you can feel free to stop in or call me at any time, and I'll review the whole matter with you in detail.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, just one quick question on the subject. Will the private owners be responsible for moving their own trees?
Yes, yes, Counselor. That would be our recommendation at this point. Although you as counselors may want to consider providing a place for them to dispose of the wood.
Okay, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So?
Stand adjourned.